Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Polacka City Commission Meeting, June 13, 2024. I'm calling this meeting to order. We'll all start with the invocation from Pastor Mulberry, who's in Zooland, and then the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner McCaskill.
Father, we thank you again. This day, we give you praise and glory for your kindness towards us. We thank you for how you brought us together once again to do the business of the city. Pray God that you will bless the leadership of this city, God, that we move this in a positive direction, even in spite of. We pray, God, that you will help us to make timely decisions that's necessary for the good of our community. Keep us civil in all that we undergo to do for your glory. And, Father, we'll keep praising you and thanking you for all you do for us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, please, Ms. Krantz.
Thank you. Commissioner Tammy McCaskill here. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Mayor Robbie Crave.
Present.
All members present and accounted for, and thereby we have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the May 23, 2024 minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor. Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Unanimous. On to public recognition's presentation, the first being the Sons of American Revolution Firefighter of the Year Award. Please give your name and address for the record and...
My name is Paul Sapp. I'm with the St. Augustine Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution. And we like to honor our first responders. And every year, we solicit inputs and recommendations from the agencies in St. John's and Putnam Counties. And this year, we received a nomination from Chief Taylor. So I'll proceed with that, if it's okay.
Absolutely.
It's still on? Okay, good. All right.
You don't have to hold it.
So we're going to present the SAR Fire Safety Commendation Medal to firefighter Lauren Futch. Let me just briefly read this. We're pleased to award the Fire Safety Commendation Medal to firefighter Lauren Futch. This award is in recognition of what Chief Taylor says is... This award is in recognition of what Chief Taylor says is, quote, 'Ms. Futch's shining example of the type of service and dedication expected from our members. In her two years of service, Lauren has consistently demonstrated her unwavering dedication to the department's mission. She approached every task, no matter how challenging, with determination and a smile on her face. Her willingness to tackle even the most undesirable tasks speaks volume about her character and commitment to excellence. Lauren's commitment to her professional development is truly commendable. She has eagerly participated in numerous training sessions, ranging from a fire inspector to hazmat and fire officer courses. Her dedication to continuous learning not only enhances her own skills, but also contributes to the overall effectiveness of our department. Moreover, Lauren's ability to communicate effectively and compassionately sets her apart as a viable team member. She is always willing to express her opinions and concerns in a thoughtful and considerate manner, fostering a culture of open dialogue and collaboration with our shift. Firefighter Lauren Futch's unwavering dedication, commitment to excellence, and compassionate approach to service makes her an invaluable asset to the department and the community she serves, and makes her an ideal recipient of the SAR File Fire Safety Commendation Medal." So, congratulations. With all the pictures. All right. We have this little...
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Come up here and take a photo. You should come up too, sir.
Yes. Okay.
No, we're above you. We're higher. I don't mean in that way.
One more.
Got your back.
I bet the camera's on.
I'm sorry, theater.
Well, I know you wouldn't just come into the City Commission. Now, congratulations.
Our first proclamation is Pride Proclamation, June 2024. Mr. Abell, you're going to come up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Robert M. Krantz, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim the month of June 2024 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQI+ community. We urge our citizens to recognize all LGBTQI+ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the city of Palaca a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit, and in celebration of the pride that powers the movement for LGBTQI+ rights. Now, therefore, I, witness and witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and call to be affixed official seal of the City of Palaca this 13th day of June in the year of our Lord 2024."
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Thank you. And everybody that's here and supported that, who would like to come up for a group photo, that would be great.
Oh, can I do one more for the flash? I'm sorry. We just forgot the flashback. They need it.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is in celebration of Juneteenth, June 19, 2024. Ms. Krantz?
Thank you. And, Madam Mayor, I believe Eddie Cutwright will be accepting on behalf of Community Affairs Department. Robert M. Cray, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth in the City of Palaca, and do earnestly employ all inhabitants to partake in the array of commemorative events orchestrated in homage to this momentous occasion, thereby collectively celebrating the chair and tenants of freedom and equality. I have here and to set my hand and call to be affixed official seal of the City of Palaca this 13th day of June in the year of our Lord 2024."
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here? You can.
Actually, I'm stepping this for Ms. Ruth Benjamin. She couldn't be here. She's stuck in Jack's Bureau.
Thank you.
On to presentations of City of Palaca Youth Ambassador.
A little bit of both. And if we may ask the mentor to the Youth Ambassador, Kian Sessions, to come to the podium.
All right.
There we go. Kian Session, 200 Dogwood Lane, Palaca, Florida. Hello, Commission. Hello, everyone in attendance. Today, we will be showing you a video of our amazing Palaca Youth Ambassadors. This year was an amazing year. They got to do a book drive at the Blue Crab Festival. They went and visited different department heads around the city. And to finish, they have to complete a mock commission meeting to finish the program. And this year, it will be online. So, Sunny, could you please cue the video?
Welcome to today's commission meeting. I will now call this meeting to order. Roll call. Commissioner Uma.
Present.
Commissioner Ray.
Present.
Commissioner Riley.
Present.
I am Mayor Reagan, and we have a quorum. The first item on our agenda is presented by Youth Ambassador Coordinator, Ms. Krantz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commission, for the opportunity to present this year's community service project of the Youth Ambassador Program. The Youth Ambassadors are asking for permission to give away the books that they've been collecting over the last few months for local youth. We would like, the City's Youth Ambassadors are asking to do it during the City's Blue Crab Festival and to set up a table at the St. John's River Center. May I answer any questions you may have?
I'm going to go back out of it and do a take two. Hold on.
To give away the books that they've been collecting over the last few months for local youth. We would like, the City's Youth Ambassadors are asking to do it during the City's Blue Crab Festival and to set up a table at the St. John's River Center. May I answer any questions you may have?
What is the goal of the book drive?
The City's are asking for permission to give away the books that they've been collecting over the last few months for local youth. We would like, the City's Youth Ambassadors are asking to do it during the City's Blue Crab Festival and to set up a table at the St. John's River Center. May I answer any questions you may have?
What is the goal of the book drive?
The goal of the book drive is to provide us community service opportunity to our City's Youth Ambassadors, as well as donating books to benefit local youth.
Thank you.
And how do you plan to advise, advertise for it?
We plan to advertise through the city's social media channels, as well as flyers. We will also have signage directing youths from traffic into the St. John's River Center.
And where have donation boxes been located?
Donation boxes have been located at City Hall, Palaca Public Works, Palaca Gas Authority, as well as the St. John's River Center.
Seeing no further discussion, I will now entertain any motions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Seeing no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries four zero. Meeting adjourned.
Can we get a round of applause?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I'm very, very proud of these three young people standing before you today. Also, I want to extend my pride to Uma Tai and Ray G., who were our Youth Ambassadors, who were transfer students from Asia. Ray came from Mongolia, and Uma came from Taiwan. Unfortunately, they could not be with us today because they had to return to Asia, but we definitely thank them for being a part of the program and having Palaca as their stop and their, on their resume and in their career. So with that, we've already presented Uma and Ray their certificates offline because of their return to Asia, but we just want to mention that we're grateful for them. But allow me to share some pride for the ones standing here. We have Reagan and Riley Blackmer, as well as Kian Session. Reagan and Riley recently graduated from QI Roberts. So... They served as interns for the City of Palaca last year, and I'm pleased to say that we now have them as interns again this year. And it's part of efforts due to this program for the Youth Ambassadors, as well as the internship program, that we can connect with our youth in this manner. And I just thank you guys so much for the opportunity to serve as the Youth Ambassador Coordinator for the city and to continue to be a part of the internship program. This program means the world to me, and I'm very pleased to continue to support it. This year, I would mention that HR actually placed two interns with me. So, thank you again for allowing me to participate. And with that, we're going, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Campbell to present the certificates, if I may. And there's also a little card in here from me. This is for Riley Blackmer. Reagan Blackmer. And last but not least, Mr. Kian Session. Although he was a college student this year, and technically means that he was older than the program calls for for high school students, he said, "Hey, Sunny, how can I be a part? How can I give back? I was an intern last year, and I want to be a part of this program somehow." So he helped me coordinate and organize this program this school year. So with that, we'd like to extend a certificate of appreciation to Kian Session.
Okay. We're now going to Employee of the Month. Ms. Jones?
Mayor Commissioners, I would like to say thank you for affording us this opportunity to recognize employees. We're going on year three. And so, candidates, I want to thank our department heads for continually submitting nominations for people that are doing outstanding performance during that month. And this month, we would like to recognize Officer Matthew Dickerson.
Thank you. You're so kind. Mayor Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, once again, come to you to be able to highlight one of our employees. But before I go into Lieutenant Cassidy's nomination for Officer Dickerson, I want to also say thank you to city staff in reference to obtaining or setting up this program, because it's been special for us for, to be able to show the positive things that the officers of the police department are doing, and also sit back and watch other employees of the city be able to obtain positive opportunities to highlight things that they're doing and achieving with the city. So I want to be able to say thank you for that. With that being said, Lieutenant Cassidy wrote, "Chief Shaw, I would like to nominate Officer Matthew Dickerson for Employee of the Month. Since coming to the Palaca Police Department, Officer Dickerson has done an outstanding job and does not hesitate to sign up for different, excuse me, to sign up for different duties at the police department. He signs up for numerous details and is quick to cover his shift where it's needed. While at work, Officer Dickerson is motivated and eager to learn. Officer Dickerson always has a positive attitude and can lighten the mood in any situation. Although Officer Dickerson has only been with the department for a short time, he was involved in a recent incident that could not have been handled better. Officer Dickerson was dispatched to an unresponsive patient at a local business, and once he arrived, he noticed the patient was turning blue in color and not responding to his presence. After assessing the situation, he realized he was dealing with a narcotic overdose. Officer Dickerson quickly administered Narcan, which began to wake the patient, and she began to regain consciousness shortly after EMS arrived. Officer Dickson's quick response and quick action basically outlined the difference between life and death. And after speaking with Sergeant Scott, they both felt that it was important to be able to nominate him for Officer, the Employee of the Month. I apologize. We get a number of different nominations, so excuse me for that, because he, his name has been coming through quite a bit. He's been there for six months, and I think I should highlight that, but I also should highlight the fact that he is very popular at the police department. He is always smiling. And to say that he lightens the mood, if, he never comes in with any type of problems, with any type of down spirits, no matter what he's been through. And I'd just like to share something with you, with Officer Dickerson. As a new employee, it was very important for him on how he came to work, when he came to work. He had trouble with his vehicle. And you would think, and us looking at it, the trouble with our vehicle, we come in, it starts off our shift, our day, in a bad mood. He was just happy to be arrived, be able to arrive at work. He arrived on time, and he was just ready to kick off his shift still with a smile. I looked at that and realized that no matter what we all go through differently is how we approach it and how we spread it throughout the rest of people we come in contact with. And that's a perfect example of how we want our officers to be able to come with that positive attitude and be able to disperse it throughout the community. Officer Dickerson, we applaud you and we thank you, and we're proud to have you at the Palaca Police Department.
Get up there in the picture.
Thank you.
It's your grandson.
Come on.
How sweet. Ready? In a good way, in a good way, yeah. Onto city manager administrative reports. Presentation Personnel Policy Update. Section eight benefits.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the presentation. We have Ms. Jones.
So, um, before you, Madam Mayor Commissioners, is this, um, section eight of our personnel policy. Um, this portion of the personnel policy was brought, um, before you all, um, at our commission meeting in October twenty-six, twenty-two, um, twenty twenty-three, and there were some concerns and language that, um, you all represented, um, acknowledged that you would like to see in the, um, in this policy, all of those, um, updates in the, in this proposed policy here. Um, the things that, um, have been added to the language of, so we did add the full-time benefits to include the city commissioners as stated in there to, um, be a part of the benefits as well as the language about our pension to match the pension provisions in our policy. And as well as the actual percentages that were paid for city and medical and dental and added the supplemental insurance language offered by the city, um, at a hundred percent cost to the employees. So all of the information that you requested in our October, um, commission meeting has been added to this policy and we just wanted to bring it before you, um, for your final review so we can bring it back for adoption.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Ms. Jones? No? Thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Appreciate you putting all the hard work in. We thank you for your labor.
Um, we're going to move on to public comments. I'm going to open the floor to public comments. Please limit them to three minutes. Give your name and address for the record. And please fill out a yellow public comment card, card rather, and this is for general items not listed on the agenda.
All right, how you doing? I, I don't have a court, uh.
You can fill out afterward, but please, I have, please give name and address.
All right, um, Tyron Bennett, Heart and Soul Food Eatery at three oh eight St. John's Avenue, um, downtown Palacca. Um, I just have a, a couple of, um, I guess, statements to make. I think the city, um, commission and the city, um, event department has been working very hard to put on great events downtown Palacca, um, working cohesively with businesses. Um, I think the only, um, response that I would have, my feedback would be is that I believe when, uh, organizations, um, come to do events downtown Palacca that, um, there needs to be, I guess, improvement on, um, communication to local businesses so that everybody's on the same page and there's no misinterpretation. I guess SOPs, standard operating procedures for how businesses should operate during anything. If anybody applies for a permit to block down streets so that we know how to maneuver, how to participate, how to, um, I guess, move forward so that everybody's on the same page. So, um, because I think the, the city is moving in a, in a great direction. I'm a new business down there. We've been there since December thirteenth. Um, a lot of you have stopped by. I've seen you in passing. Um, and there's very great support from the event department and, um, the police department and fire department when these events are going on. So I guess moving forward, I guess we have to, um, look at, um, I think my perspective is that it should be a better piece of communication from organizations to private businesses, um, in that area that may be affected from the closures or anything that, from the particular organization. And I want to say this, I don't think it's specifically, I don't think it's the responsibility of the city nor the city events department to do that. I think that organization has, um, the, uh, the responsibility to do that themselves. Uh, because they're the one applying for the permits. They're the one that's doing all the, the footwork. So that's just my piece. Um, I think if we do that, then we'll move better in a positive way.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Kitchens and Ms. Lawson Brown. Together.
We know three minutes.
I'm here for moral support.
Now, we came, we came today. Oh, my name is Mary Lawson Brown.
And I'm in the kitchen.
And I live at one oh seven South Ninth Street, Palacca.
Ten twenty-seven South Twelfth Street, Palacca.
We came together, we're a part of an organization that came together and we have decided that we want to work on the history of Palacca and getting it recognition and maybe a walking trail for our people so that when we can draw more tourism in here. But I also came to thank you all because you all decided a while back that you all would honor my grandmother and really my family by putting a kiosk up. The kiosk will be, um, in place on Saturday, the twenty-second, not this Saturday, but next Saturday. At, um, we're doing it at the churchyard on St. John's Avenue because we don't want to block off the street. Want to be good citizens. And we're having an arts and crafts festival for seniors. Because ha- having that many people here, we wanted to do something for other people and our seniors have stuff that they do that they cannot get rid of or not sell, and they need extra money. And it's strictly to help them and they keep proceeds from what it is. We just providing that space and bring the arts and crafts to show young people. Maybe some of them will get interested in learning how to do it. Uh, we're also opening up St. Mary's Episcopal Church that was built in eighteen eighty-three and letting us, letting folks see how long we have had the history of Palacca and the people who worked in it. Uh, our family business now has been in Palacca for a hundred and ten years. My grandparents came and started it in nineteen fourteen. So I want everybody to know, we thank the city commissioner for recognizing the ankle we've been in this community for all this time.
And I'd like to add that, uh, for the dedication of the Mary Lawson Hospital kiosk at one P M. On the twenty-second, we want, would like to see any descendants of the doctors that worked at Mary Lawson Hospital like Dr. Gerganius, uh, Dr. Massey, Dr. Hebel, uh, any of them, and then anybody that was born at Mary Lawson Hospital, they're all invited to come down and join us in the city for the dedication of Mary Lawson Hospital kiosk, honoring this great hospital, which is one of a kind and the first of a kind in the United States, which had both black and white patients from nineteen eighteen up until it closed in nineteen sixty-two.
Fifty, oh.
Sixty-two, y'all.
We take it down to sixty-two.
And I was born in the hospital area.
And me too.
And Mary.
Um, Mr. Deputy? Name and address for the record.
Sam Deputy, nine seventeen Carst Street, six two three St. John's Avenue. We love Blue Crab. Blue Crab was quite a surprise for us because for fifty-seven and a half years, we've been on St. John's Avenue as printers and during the festival, we were part of the parking lot. This year, we were surprised because on Wednesday evening, we noticed numbering going on in the seven hundred block. And we had not been notified that we were a part of the mix. Well, that was exciting. And we went out to find out. Well, we hadn't been notified. They hadn't, nothing. Let's just put it that way. But we worked out our situation. We got free spots. Uh, you know, to put our business, we got all this. They're closing at four o'clock on Friday like normal. Okay, we can handle this. We can deal with this, although it's in two days and we don't even have workers. Because it's going to be the weekend and we're going to be the parking lot. So on Thursday, we're getting our act together and then we go to preschool graduation because my grand niece is more important than anything. So I'm at preschool graduation and we come back and our street is blocked. And it's on the city website that afternoon that you're blocking my street. I'm sure you saw it on the city website Thursday like the rest of us. Our street's blocked. All day Friday, we're blocked with no business and no vendors. We're just blocked off. I came down to City Hall to ask questions. We got the permit out. There was no blockage. There was, it was just no communication to us as businesses. So I lost Friday. So one, I'm asking the city, since you blocked the street, not Blue Crab. Blue Crab can't do that according to the ordinance. Only you can. The city does owe St. John's Avenue some restitution for we lost business. Not even the courthouse knew we were blocking the street. So there were some problems there. And then we noticed, because we're learning, we're learning. We noticed that some businesses towards the river had gone ahead on Wednesday and put their stuff in the street. And they were allowed to do that. Wow, next year, I'm going to be in on the mix, which means if, if the city allows that, I'm going to do that. Well, that's not according to the permit. I know that. I've dealt with this event policy for twenty-some years. I know the policy. But the policy does say this, written notification fifteen days before the event. And the list that's notified is supposed to be turned into the city so that you can hold accountability that this is done. And then the other notice in there, I want to point out, in the event policy, it says it shall not, an event shall not unduly affect a business. All day Friday with no business, that affects everybody. I mean, we're on our own. Anyway, I want to see the policy revisited because it needs to be updated and, uh, can we hold everybody on the same accountability? Thank you.
Is there anybody else here for public comment? Seeing now we closed the public comment. Forward on, Commissioner and staff response, if any.
I do want to, um, let the commission know that we are in the process of doing an after action on the Blue Crab Festival and a report will be forthcoming, uh, identifying some of those, uh, issues that were mentioned in the last, uh, um, commentary. So, uh, we were happy to be able to work through some of the issues. I think it was a good event. Overall, my first event, so my first exposure to that, uh, but we can always get better and that's what we're focused on in the after action report.
Thank you. Um, on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled? I have a request to pull E. Is there any other items to pull on the consent agenda? Present to you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, we would like to withdraw, uh, item.
C.
C, yes. From consideration and bring that back at a later date.
With, um, C, can we bring that up temporarily for a discussion even though it's being pulled? Because I think when you bring it back, it may, I just have a comment to make with that.
Okay.
Are there any other items to adjourn or pull?
Is that something you'd like to discuss under Commissioner's comments or, okay?
Okay. Any, anything else? Not who we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda excluding items C and E for discussion.
Say.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? No, uh, no opposition. Okay, so moving on to C, discussion.
Um, I just want to bring, I want the city to be, uh, kind of in the know with regards to the way that we brand or end label stuff. Um, I think the concept is awesome, but I don't want it to appear as if the city is promoting liquor or drinking. Um, so I will make the request as we move forward that we take in consideration, possibly changing the name because it also, um, weaves out, uh, some individuals that may want to attend, but based on the name, uh, they don't want any association, um, with that. So I would make the recommendation as we move forth with branding things that are city functions, um, through the actual city that we take in consideration, not having entitles anything as it pertains to alcoholic adult beverages.
Yes, you know, once we, and once we got wind of that and we kind of, that's why we pulled it, but it was just a theme. We were just trying to come up with different themes each week to kind of bring the crowd down there, but you are correct. We need to be more considerate about the alcohol label. And maybe tacos and, and tomatoes or something, but we'll come up with some, we'll come up with something creative that take a look at it.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm totally, um, for the events that have been, um, taking place. But, um, again, it was brought to me on multiple occasions by citizens, so I just wanted to make sure that I did my due diligence to bring it up in this form so that they know it was brought up and again, for us to take in consideration because again, I do believe that that's a valid point as you reiterated as well, so.
Right.
Thank you. Um, E, Ms. Krantz.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-four R one twenty-nine, a resolution of the city of Palacca, Florida. Granting a special events permit to Big Homie Inc. for the family-friendly fund day. Sending forth the provisions of the permit, granting provision for closure, and providing for scribners errors.
Thank you.
Okay, this is an event for Mr. Mr. Hunk, Mr. Keith Williams. Uh, it's a, a reoccurring event that we had earlier in this year and when he, when he took us to hate this from it and he brought it back to us, uh, back in, uh, early May to revisit it, uh, we vetted it through our special event team. Uh, we actually gave him some contingency just in case we wanted to make sure it would pass. He chose to continue to keep it at Hank Brown. Uh, so, uh, we put in some provisions inside the resolution that if he's going to keep it at Hank Brown, then he should be responsible for the, the restaurants. Uh, and then also he called the Captain Williams to kind of minimize some of the officers' support. Uh, and we're just going to vet it each week to make sure and if this team to get out of control, then we help them have guidance to counsel it or shut it down.
Thank you, Mr. Cutright. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Cutright? Actually, Ms. uh, Ms. Kitchens asked to have it pulled. Ask me to have it pulled. I, she would have to come, has your concern been answered? Okay, come, come, I was, we're getting to that point. I was asking first of this. No, no, come on up, Ms. Kitchens, name and address for the record, please.
Allegory kitchens, ten twenty-seven South Twelfth Street, Palacca, Florida. I had two concerns. First of all, as, as happened a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Jones, I think, needs to recuse himself because that's his in-laws. And second, uh, these, for a class A or B permit, you have to sign it sixty days before the event. Mr. Williams signed this on the twenty-first of May, which is fifty-three days before the event. The same timeframe happened the last time, and I've noticed that it's become a habit for the city to pass permits that have not been filed within the timeline. It usually if somebody has to do it sooner or later, I should say, you can't make the sixty days, then they come to you and ask for a waiver of the time. Mr. Homie or Big Homie Corporation did not ask for a waiver the last time. They did not ask for a waiver this time. I don't think they knew about it. So the thing I'm concerned about is there's a communication gap somewhere between the city code saying you have to sign it sixty days before the, after, before the permit for class A and B, and this is, this is a recurring incident, not just with Mr. Homie or Mr. Williams. But I think this needs to be addressed by the city and is for the recues. If that's no longer the case, it's the same situation, then I'm fine with that. And I didn't intend to speak. I just thought the city could handle it internally.
Why on this event was she, why is it brought up about the timeframe again?
That's a Ms. West answer.
No, I'm asking a question.
Okay.
Because I noticed it before and I thought it was just a glitch and when it happens a second time in a Because I noticed it before and I thought it was just a glitch. And when it happens a second time in a row, you either follow your city code or you don't follow it. It's that simple. And I don't think, I don't think the applicant is a problem. I don't think the applicant is being told. Because when he signed that on the twenty first and it was sixty days till the first date, it was fifty three days. He should have been informed. He should have been informed and the city didn't inform him is what I'm getting at.
There have been other events that have taken place since that time that you've been in meetings and you have not stated anything with regards to that.
Yes, and I apologize for not being Johnny on the spot and speaking all the time. The commission should have called it instead of me. But I have to catch this crap and you don't. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Ms. West or Mr. Cutright?
The, the timeline on Mr. Mr. Williams' event, we started this conversation about his event back in early April. So he well past the sixty day window. He did do several events before Tucker break and then came back. So that's why we felt that he didn't have to wait the sixty day time limit because the event had already been vetted a couple of times. And we had enough time to vet it and make sure it was a real approval event for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
And I would like us to clarify what the ordinance says as well as what the policy says. Ms. West.
So we have the policy in terms of conferring with the applicant, the sixty day policy. However, we have completely adhered to our municipal code, section fifty dash one forty nine. The deadline for filing an application for permit shall be made at least ten working days prior to the date requested. So we are in complete compliance legally with our code. As to the recusal issue, Mr. Jones did, in fact, recuse himself before the last vote, and I believe he has every intention of accusing himself this time. So we're in compliance on that as well.
Thank you.
And then with respect to the policy that we have in place with regard to class A, class B, and class C.
Well, class A and class B, sixty days, and class C is thirty days. And that is just giving us enough time for the city to vet it and make sure it's a favorable event.
Thank you. With that said, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
I recused myself from that vote, Ms.
Thanks.
Madam, Madam Mayor.
I have a farm break, Commissioner Jones.
On to regular business, discussion direction, resolution twenty twenty four R one, two, three. Ms. Krantz.
Hello. Good to see you again. I was here in March and in April. My name is Diane Kelly, one, two, three Lakeside Lane, Crescent City, Florida. I am representing Animal Rescue Consortium in Crescent City. And you may recall that I came here asking for financial support for a spay and neuter capability. It's a portable trailer capability. And what I mentioned at that time was that we were working with the USDA in attempts to get a grant for the majority of the funding. And unfortunately, and I did mention that while it looked positive, there were no guarantees. And that if we did not get a grant from the USDA, then we would get a grant somewhere else or we would find another way to fund. So what has occurred since then, I wanted to give you an update and then I also want to ask that we lock in a funding commitment, please, today. But what happened is the USDA has put the entire program on hold this fiscal year. Monies were not released from Washington for rural development grants, unfortunately. But the good news is we have a private citizen who is granting fifty thousand dollars out of their donor advised fund toward this. So what I'm asking for today is your support to continue to move forward with this and with a commitment from Palacca and also with a commitment on the actual amount of funding. Reason is, we currently have secured a commitment from Putnam County, B O C C, for twenty five thousand. We have fifty thousand, excuse me, from the private donor. We have five thousand committed from Pomona Park. And we have a meeting coming up, a budget meeting with Interlocken on Monday in attempt to get between five and seven thousand from them. And then certainly Palacca and then I, Weelaca, we're still finalizing work with Weelaca. But I want to try to lock this in so that we can move forward. And that's really why I'm here today. So is there any background information that would be helpful to this group at this point? I want to be sensitive to my few minutes.
Does anybody have any questions?
And I want, can I share a couple of things real quick? Statistics, I was looking at the trailer. We were able to find one, a brand new one. Hasn't been built yet, but it will be obviously built. But it is less than what the initial estimate was, so we're happy about that. And I did, it's a hundred and three thousand dollars. And I did look at the cost per citizen in Putnam County, and that would be about a dollar thirty four. With Palacca having over ten thousand citizens, technically, Palacca would probably harness over thirteen thousand dollars of the, the balance. But of course, that wouldn't be really equitable because the B O C C has to play a big role here. So what I'm asking Palacca for is seven thousand dollars. I asked previously between five and seven. I am asking that you consider seven only because Palacca has the greatest share of municipality beneficiaries for this capability. So that's what I'm asking for. And it can be either in October, it could be your next fiscal year, or it certainly could be this year. But I think last time you mentioned that could be a challenge this year.
Anybody's thoughts on this?
We did say that we were gonna make a commitment once they went to our surrounding councils. So I think it's now time for us to.
How much?
How much?
So what's, what are everybody's thoughts on that?
Seven, just, I mean, seven thousand dollars. I mean, I think the city of Palacca is the county seat. So we have more density here, more animals and more people. So I think it would be prudent that we do seven thousand.
It was less than what I was thinking anyway.
I was actually thinking a little higher. I was thinking around ten, but.
Wow. Okay, okay. I'm not getting my hopes up. Okay.
I mean, I think we're comfortable with seven. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with seven. However, however, the town, Interlocken did say five to seven will be larger than them. If you can. I'm there for whatever the, whatever the flavor of the commission is there.
Just so the team.
We're willing to commit.
Do we have any, well, funds can go from your commissioner line item, right? Can you use that? So you have to have balances that you would like to kind of lean towards that. I think that would be a. That's an event.
Is there anything that we thought?
It's a daily event.
I would, I do have one comment, or actually two. One, I would ask that the commission consider making a commitment contingent on them actually establishing the mobile clinic. So if for some reason they don't do the mobile clinic, then you would not be providing the funding. And then the second request would be, I think you had talked about possibly wanting some data on the number of spays and eaters that were done here in the city of Palacca as part of their demographic information collection.
Can you clarify a little bit about when you say establish the clinic? Do you mean the acquisition of the vehicle? Are you saying not contribute until after it's launched? Because that would mean we would not probably get the funding to purchase it.
So if you, if it came down to the requirement for the funding in order to purchase the actual, then that would be something that it's at the pleasure of the commission, but my recommendation would be yes, that would go towards the purchase of the.
Okay. What we could do maybe to address that is the, it would be in installments, one third right up front, one third mid and one third at the end. We could put Palacca toward the end so that you would have reasonable confidence that the vehicle is actually in existence. We could do that and we could certainly report the statistics to you as we, as soon as we launch it. How many are we doing in Palacca and certainly all the other areas as well? Others have asked for the same thing. We can do that.
I mean, she's been overly flexible.
Thank you. Thank you.
She has come back multiple times and we've kind of kicked it along. So I would definitely like us to go ahead and try to finalize this, especially if we're gonna determine if it's coming out of this or with budget season up upon us, getting with, you know, our staff to make sure if it's something, especially if she's saying she's willing to put it towards the end. I show that's just another step of her compromising, I'm being a good steward of her word. So.
Thank you.
Again, we need this service in the city and I would love for us to make that commitment tonight.
I expect that we would. It's time. So again, now is the decision of how much of a commitment.
I'm willing to go with the ten, again, with her being as flexible as she is.
Do you want to make a motion?
I motion to, for us, the city of Palacca to to commit ten thou, ten thousand dollars to the ARC, the ARC rescue with contingent upon us being last to make sure with, with quarterly check-ins.
We can do that.
You're gonna make about the mobile, the mobile, the mobile vehicle in the statistics.
Along with the mobile vehicles and statistics.
Second.
We have a second. We had a second already. Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
Well, I just want to say on the racket too, I mean, I don't think the city, we, we didn't drag our feet on this. We, we supported this outright. We just wanted to make sure that things were done proper and done right as opposed to just doling out funds. We want to make sure that the money that we give out, that we're just not handing it out and not seeing the, the fruit or the product that we're actually looking for. And so I think we're just doing our due diligence as it relates to that.
And thank you for organizing and doing this, your organization, and thank you for your patience with us. And we all do deal with, I call it Catville sometimes. Palacca is just full of cats, cats.
Yes.
So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much. And really, your support is highly recognized and I appreciate it.
I just want to make sure that we follow all the financial limitations. So I want to take a moment and ask the Director of Finance if she has anything.
I did have a question or concern. I wanted to make sure that I understood whether or not you all were going to transfer some of your money to this or just you want me to try to find the funding, any guidance in that? Okay.
Okay, I will start.
And it's not, it is an event, but it's an ongoing issue. It's not a given event. So.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify.
General funds?
That will, that will be where it would come from. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify.
It's impacting the general public.
Okay, on to.
Thank you.
Presentation, thank you. Presentation acceptance of the audit report, fiscal, fiscal year rather, twenty twenty three, twenty four. Mr. Harvey.
Mayor and commissioners, all that are here today, thank you. We have successfully had the audit completed. I'd like to introduce Mr. Roderick Harvey, the managing principal of the firm H C T CPAs and consultants.
Good day, good day, Mayor. Commissioners, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, my name is Roderick Harvey. I'm with H C T. I also have with me Brandon, Brianna, and Muziki. We will be presenting the results of your audit for September thirty, twenty twenty three. I am hopeful that, there we go, will you have or will see the slide presentation? We have performed our audit. We have performed a review, our review of internal controls and performed substantive tests. And we'll be issuing a clean or unmodified opinion. The date of our audit report is set to be June fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Next slide, please. Over the next few minutes, we will spend time discussing audit results, supplemental slides, and the tripod of responsibilities, the commission, management, and us as your external auditors. Next slide, please. We were hired to, and we did perform our audit in accordance with G A S, generally accepted auditing standards, and in accordance with the single audit if needed. We performed our planning. There were no changes to our planning. And we have or will issue all of the required auditors' reports. There are no outstanding issues. And all significant accounting policies and practices are noted in note one of the financial statement. Next slide, please. We deemed significant accounting estimates as allowance for doubtful account, depreciation, and the fair value of investments, significant risk, management override, revenue recognition, and cash for all related entities. There is no new pronouncement that impacted the F Y twenty twenty three audit report. Next slide, please. As relates to uncorrected misstatements, no matters to report. Any matters that were noted were adjusted by finance during the course of the audit. And there are no outstanding financial statement presentation or disclosure omissions. Next slide, please. Control deficiencies, none to report, related party issues, none. And we ask that if our audit report is used in another offering, i.e. a debt offering, that we are made aware of it. Next slide, please. We are required to provide certain disclosures or communications to you as those charged with governance. You can see the debt that is before you. You can also determine that there are no matters to report. I will highlight a few. No illegal acts, no disagreements with management, and no consultations with other accountants. Next slide. Based on A I C P A guidance, we are deemed as independent. Next two slides. Over the next few minutes, we will discuss the financial reporting. We'll delve into revenues, expenses, capital assets, and long-term debt. Next slide. Again, we performed our audit in accordance with G A S to ensure that finance is keeping the financial records in accordance with G A S, generally accepted accounting principles. On to the numbers. Revenues for the year ended twenty twenty three thirty seven point one as compared to thirty seven, thirty four point two in the prior year. We took a sample of significant transactions revenues and tested those revenues for existence, accuracy, and presentation. Expenses for the period twenty twenty three, twenty eight point one million as compared to thirty two point three in the prior year twenty two. And again, we tested those expenditure transactions for completeness, accuracy, and presentation. Next slide, please. Capital assets grew a little bit over the two-year period, eighty eight point eight million as compared to seventy six for the same time period. And long-term debt was relatively flat over the two-year period, twenty four point one as compared to twenty two point eight million. And we did confirm the debt balances with third parties. Next slide, please. Based on our audits, we are required to give an opinion and also to look at the control environment. How do you do, how does the city do what it does? Next slide, please. If we were to find any deficiencies, there are two types. There are significant deficiencies, which is a internal control weakness that is less severe than a material misstatement, but important enough to be brought to the attention of management. A material weakness, which is the stronger of the two, that weakness is one such that there's reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the entity's financial statements will not be prevented, detected, or corrected on a timely basis. Based on our audits, we have no M L Cs for the current year. We are also required to follow up on prior audits, which we have noted before you. The audit zero zero one dealt with payroll in the subsequent year. We have reviewed that, discussed it with finance, and deemed that finding from twenty twenty one to have been cleared or implemented. Moving forward to the zero zero two finding, which dealt with matching pay rates in accordance to what was paid, to what was approved. Again, we have done an in-depth review with finance and also determined that that finding is clear. Next slide, please. As relates to the tripod, management is responsible for the, for the financial statements. Management is also responsible to provide access to us, to people, and paperwork. The commission, those charged with governance, is required to maintain an organization of oversight as relates to internal controls and to maintain a control environment that's designed to prevent, detect, and correct fraud. Next slide, please. Again, our responsibility is to audit and to. Again, our responsibility is to audit and to issue an opinion, or how I say it, is to audit and to report to you. And as you can see on the next slide, we have several required communications should those things come to our attention. We have none to report. And at this time, if, next slide, if the mayor will allow, we will do our very, very best to answer any questions that you may have of us.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Harvey?
I don't. He's been very thorough in explaining it prior to this as always, so I'm grateful. I have no questions.
No further questions from the board.
Commissioner Moore?
Uh, no further question. In fact, I want to, you know, just give them kudos for the work that they do. We think they always do an awesome job as well as staff working with uh our auditors. Um, and we've also got to give our finance director um her kudos because uh my understanding, this has been the cleanest uh audit we've had, and she put a number of things in place. And so um thanks to her, with her um level of knowledge and everything that she brings to the table. Um, while we had a, a clean audit, I mean, I would like to see a little bit more from a scope or work standpoint, from going back twenty-four months. Uh, we've had a lot of movement in our structure. Um, and I like to see a little bit more of a deeper dive in terms of from the twenty, from January twenty-fourth back.
Okay.
Twenty-four months uh in terms of uh a number of things. I mean, we, we will look at things how we can, how we comply with maybe even things that are at, at the airport with utilization of uh the, the grants and different things of that nature. Um, making sure that we are in line with how the grants are supposed to be operating uh so that we don't lose funding. And uh in addition to other things, so you, when you look January twenty-fourth and back, uh I think that will kind of uh help give us uh a better understanding that if, how, how clean we are. And it's just not just that, but it's just projects as a whole from January twenty-fourth back twenty-four months.
Through the mayor, if possible, I would like to just add, yes, we can do a specialty engagement. I would recommend agreed-upon procedures where we can agree with city staff and/or the electives and perform an audit specifically for certain elements, certain accounts, or certain departments for a specified period of time, which it seems like yours said on twenty-four months. And so we will be happy to do that as a breakout engagement. And we will report and can report those results directly to the elected officials.
Now, if you ask this question.
So that is a separate engagement. Yes, it would have its own scope, and this is still America. So yes, it is a separate charge.
All are clear on that.
Great question.
No further questions at this time. I want to commend you on the great job that you've done and the fact that you took time to meet with each of us. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. I don't have to reiterate whatever you said, but I appreciate it as well and appreciate Ms. Hardy and the whole financial department's efforts. So thank you all.
Thank you for having us. Thanks.
I would like to thank you as well. Job well done. And they're running to Miami.
Madam Mayor.
Bye. Be safe. Okay.
Remember, we do need a motion to accept the audit. Someone, we have a motion a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, uh, just to make sure that we have the necessary authorization on that previous item um with regard to where the, the source of funds are. I believe um Ms. Cardy has some suggestions of what.
Oh, okay. There is a slide there right after the audit. I'm just, or maybe it's right after staff report. And it has, I want to take the, a moment and just remind us where we are with ARPA funding, I believe. That's right. Uh, page eighty-four of two fifty-one, so it'll be page eighty-five maybe. I think this is what. So just using this moment as, you know, let's know where we are kind of thing. Uh, ARPA, the American Rescue Plan uh started out, if you can go to the bottom, like five million is what we actually received. I can't see that number, but I'll assume it's five million two hundred thirty-four thousand. And um the commissioners have uh made certain votes and allocations. And so as of this moment, what I was trying to do is let them have an understanding of where we are in terms of money that have been spent. Yeah. So I, what I'm getting from uh from the staff is that everything that's in yellow is something that um uh starting with small business, a hundred thousand vocational, forty thousand homeless, fifty thousand mental health, hundred thousand public, public health, fifty thousand sport complex, twenty-five thousand. So all of those that are in yellow, uh, we haven't had any movement or any what we would consider precise direction in those areas. So.
I think we had a question.
Well, we have Commissioner McCaskill. I had a question. Just want to be on the same page. You're doing a great job, but if I, I just want us to be on the same page and be able to see it as you go along. It's kind of difficult.
To see that. It's, it's, that, that, they have it on, it's on the back of page eighty-four. Like, if you look at eighty-four, two fifty-one, but it's so tiny, I can't read it.
So is it possible?
There it is. If you could make it better, so I could even see it.
I think it's two categories we could use.
Mm-hmm. So that's good. Um, now can we get like a whole page?
Public health.
Scroll, scroll down.
Right. Yep. So can we go down to the very bottom and see what the total of the yellow is? Are you able to see that? Is that three hundred, three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars? So that's ARPA funding that um that we either need more direction on or when we have um uh activities coming before the commission and we're trying to figure out, okay, where are we going to get funding from? To the extent that it can be uh ARPA spent, we would look at that as well. I'm just putting that out there. So I think uh the point of today is letting you be aware of the three hundred sixty-five thousand that you may want to give uh staff more direction as to how to move forward. And uh when we do have a need that needs to be met, we will be looking at those funds.
So as, as an alternative to taking funds from the general fund, you do have the option of taking funds from the American Rescue Plan. And there are two categories there I think are directly relevant that you might want to consider. If you scroll up.
Scroll up, please, to where all the yellows are.
You have public health.
Right.
Homeless assistance. So.
Right.
You have fifty thousand available to you under public health and fifty thousand under homeless assistance. So you were to direct us to make a budget transfer uh out of either of those funds to pay for the item uh concerning the the mobile spay and neutering clinic. That's an option.
Public health would be.
Public health.
That's higher. You don't take it from public health?
I would, I would think.
Well, I put a motion on Florida to take that money. The ten thousand that Commissioner McCaskill um bought up earlier for the cause of the animals from the.
Thank you.
Public health line item with the ARPA fund allocations.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition?
Thank you for direction.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, while we're, while we're on, can I, may I comment on it? So while we're on the uh ARPA funds, we still need to get those things uh like rolled out. We need to get those things in, in terms of the um housing, the um housing, how's that, that's going to know where we're supposed to be collecting uh applications. We have two point five million that we're going to be um dispersing, two point four nine, whatever. So we just want to make sure that um we get some updates on some of these things and how they're rolling out because I've had people to ask me of, uh, what's the status on uh that. So we can get a feedback on that. It'd be great.
Okay. We can set aside time to come back to you to get uh specific direction on the allocation of those funds that are not currently incumbent.
May I say so? Uh, as it relates to that homeless matter, um, we are moving forward aggressively with the housing repair. Matter of fact, we've had a meeting, it's recently, I believe it was yesterday, right? Or a day before yesterday. I mean, we're doing so much. But uh, yeah, we've, we've met, we've uh you're involved. If you want to address that a little bit.
And I, I just noticed that Mr. Griffith walked in the room. He's been working with Bill Lazar. You could provide a, a comprehensive update.
Well, we, we just like to stay informed because, again, the constituents are asking uh us uh for feedback and what's happening and different things of that nature. So I'd just like to see regular reports, if at all possible, going forward. We need at least uh every two weeks, I mean, a month. We, we need to get these reports so that we understand and know so we can be able to better answer the constituents.
So do you want Mr. Griffith to come up?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioners, uh, I'm sure you all recall, um, you awarded uh to St. John's Housing Partnership. Uh, the contract has been drafted. The program documents have been revised per your last conversation and recommendations. And we're looking at July eleventh to bring it back before you for acceptance. And as soon as it's accepted, we will open an application cycle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Since we're still talking about allocations, may I?
Yes, you may.
And the chief may be able to talk a little more about this, but I was uh approached by one of the POW administrator or director, Black Athletic League. A reference to education for, we had some money allocated uh for education, vocational education, COVID-nineteen education. That's eighty thousand dollars. Um, and we've already, I guess, taken forty thousand away from that. POW needed some of those fundings, and I think she probably contacted everyone up here. Uh, but Chief Shaw would know about the trip that they take, and they requested it. So if we could help in any kind of way, I would like to entertain speaking on the need right now and maybe helping.
I think Lisa, uh, Lolita Thomas would be better. She does plan to bring you a presentation uh on the need for that and the request for it. I think it'd be better if uh she actually approached you and provided that information for you. We have had uh limited discussions on it and uh what it would go to, but I think uh in light of uh what she has prepared or prepared to bring you, it, it'll uh be better if she does it in the presentation so that she can uh make sure that I don't miss quote or miss anything for it.
You know, estimated ballpark figure of that trip that she's trying to take with her counsel.
So we have a couple, and I will say um there's one that uh our youth directors, a council that we were looking at taking that is coming up in uh um the next couple of weeks uh as far as for Disney. Um, the funding for that has not been established, and I don't believe we're going to be able to make that, that deadline. But we, uh, outside of that, we have the teen summit um that's coming up at the end of this month. Um, that's going to Charlotte, and it requires us to spend uh allocated funding um for the teens to uh for the mentoring program to travel to um Charlotte, receive the uh week of uh conference and education that they go through as far as the mentoring portion um from the National POW Organization, um, one of which I'm, I'm a part of, so I can tell you, they do throughout the whole day, receive an enormous amount of education towards um just positive light uh in the direction they need to move in. Not only in education, career development, um, as, as far as how they carry themselves as individuals. Um, they'll have a number of guest speakers coming in. Um, just in short, uh, the cost of that, uh, how we get the, the children to the trip and the lodging for it is a large amount on us as an organization.
Just kind of to piggyback, um, to answer that question, I did have the conversation with her with regards to the approximate cost, and that cost for approximately thirteen youth and four adults is somewhere along the lines of eleven thousand dollars. So that's an approximate, and she, uh, as stated, um, Chief Shaw, uh, as Chief Shaw stated, I apologize that she was working on a more formal presentation to bring it to us that will break down um the uh costs basically per person and things of that nature. But just to give you a ballpark figure, she did give me the number of approximately eleven thousand.
And I can tell you that we are, um, we have to take not only the youth, but we have to take the, the mentors as well.
So um on that, we will be taking sixteen individuals to uh Charlotte, North Carolina uh as, as uh our, our local chapters, Palaka POW, and all of that responsibility falls on our local chapter.
So um with that, and you say the deadline, that's why we try to get ahead of this because the way we're meeting right now, I would like to entertain a motion to uh give POW the eleven thousand dollars, or at least set it aside, set it aside for that purpose at this time is uh.
Can we set aside a greater number just in case? Again, this was.
Madam Mayor. I did have a meeting with Ms. Selina today, and she indicated that she was gonna, she is planning to come back in thirty days with a formal request. Um, we did discuss some of these items. One of the uh challenges that we have in taking action today is that it's not on the agenda, and we haven't noticed it at this point.
Well.
Well.
We can, because time is of the essence, and we do want to help, and we already know about it. So it's our kids and our program that we're trying to help.
Well, I think, again, in order for this to be properly done, I'm all for setting aside, but if she's willing to come in and give us that formal um presentation, I think it allows for that transparency that we so asked for, sitting on this dais. And again, it gives the opportunity for it to be properly noticed, to ma- make it appear that there's nothing that's.
And.
When is this trip?
And just, well, the trip within itself. Uh, the trip is on June twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth. Um, and the, the funding portion for it on our behalf, you, you have time for the next meeting. And we wanted to uh make sure that we were able to bring it for that to be transparent to the, the commission. So they covered not, not only um what we are doing, uh, what it's for, and who it's affecting. So we asked that, that she prepare that documentation, and we've already discussed with the National POW Board um to where we're able to uh be able to make this trip under our current grant and be able to um return to you, provide those documentation so we can then um, in essence, replace that money, reimburse that money. Um, the, she has the numbers and the reasons and everything that she's asking for, so I don't want to miss fake, miss quote, misspeak on what she's requesting, but I, I, I would love for the commitment because that is something that's very big for the community.
Right.
Okay. So I, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Campbell that if we, if we do have the time and we can put it on July's agenda, then that would be the preferable way to go. If time is of the essence, and that's something we have to do now, that's fine. But I think if we can wait, that'd be great.
So you say July's agenda?
Well, that's, that's.
That's the very next one. Yes, and again, the trip portion has already been, as far as for us to be able to make the trip, is, it's been allotted. Um, and then we'll be able to address how that funding goes to it later.
Okay. No, set it aside.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to caution that one of the things that we'll do is make sure that the funds can be spent consistent with ARPA guidance, guidelines.
And that's why extra time is beneficial. Um, on to public hearings. An ad hoc, or next twenty twenty-four zero five, Ms. Krantz.
Presenting to you for adoption is ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh five, an ordinance of the city of Palaka, Florida, revising chapter two, division four of the Code of Ordinances of the. An ordinance of the city of Polacka, Florida revising Chapter Two, Division Four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Polack, Florida entitled General Employees Retirement Plan, amending Section Two, One Seventy-One Pension Adjustments, creating a four percent one-time cost of living adjustment for all retirees effective October one, twenty twenty-four, repealing all ordinance in conflict, providing authority to codify, providing an effective date and providing prescribing errors.
Thank you, Ms. Cotty. Do you want to speak to this?
Yes, this is the second reading and previously we presented that there had not been an increase in twenty years and how the cost of living had gone up significantly. The fact that currently we're at thirty-two point seven percent. And for the year that's coming in October, it's going to be like twenty-nine. So even when we add on this one-time adjustment, we are not going to be spending more than what we're currently spending. And for that reason, staff recommended that we comply with the actuaries report.
Thank you. Questions? Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? Seeing no close public comment, do we have a motion to approve? Motion is second, all in favor. Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. On to ordinance twenty-four zero six, Give Peeps a Chance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Presenting to you ordinance number twenty-four oh six. An ordinance of the city of Polacka, Florida providing that urban homesteading standards for raising and keeping of domestic fowl and the residential zoning prohibiting roosters, providing for conflict severability, repeal, scrivener's errors and providing for effective date.
Thank you. Does anybody else, Ms. West, who's speaking to you this ordinance?
I, I can, okay. Mayor, according to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the city of Polack has a relatively high number of households, nineteen percent without vehicles that are more than one and a half mile from a supermarket, which constitutes a food desert. This particular ordinance would provide urban homesteading opportunities to allow those households to have more convenient access to fresh eggs. Essentially, this ordinance merely provides standards by prohibiting roosters and other crowing fowl that may create a nuisance. But it does allow for residents to engage in self-sustaining food production through the keeping of backyard chickens. And it does promote urban homesteading to provide for food security and self-sufficiency for the residents of the city of Polacka. By sourcing eggs from backyard chickens, residents can reduce their dependency on expensive grocery store items and fluctuations due to inflation and avian bird flu.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Ms. West?
Yep, I have a statement. I was driving around just this morning and I saw chickens in the middle of the road. So it's a difference with the chickens being in the backyard in the pen than they're being in the road because that's going to be another police call and code enforcement call, stuff like that. It's different in the city. And yes, I just think that if somebody else would have told me, it'd been different. I saw these chickens in the middle of the road. There was actually at the front of the fence and some of them were, but others were right in the middle of the road. So I, I, I know what the statement you just read, but I don't know about that.
So if I may, Commissioner Jones, that's a great point. And actually, I think that's the reason for the drafting of this ordinance is to prevent exactly that. This would provide guidelines and standards and chickens walking around in the middle of the road would be prohibited. You would have to keep them in a coop and, and a defined perimeter and it provides for guidelines along those standards.
Thank you. And most cities these days have a similar ordinance. Do you have something else? I'm sorry.
I, I don't think I heard the, the, the distance between a, a family market or you said grocery store. What's the distance?
One half mile from a supermarket. It's, it's the percentage of households is nineteen percent. But in the city of Polacka, do not have vehicles.
We got public transportation somewhat. We got Uber, we have Lyft.
But you have to pay for Uber and Lyft. That if you don't have the funds to have a vehicle, generally you don't have the funds to afford to go for a regular shopping expedition, probably not. But anyway, I think it's a, I think it's a good concept. I do have a question, why ten chickens? Is that a magical number? I mean, usually it's four or five. I was just curious. Ten seems like a lot.
Yes, Commissioner, actually, there are quite a few properties already within the city of Polacka that appear to be around that.
Some of them are my neighbors. I hear them. And they have, and they have roofs. So I don't know what the roof, how if we're going to crack down on roosters.
I did, this, this was the, actually came from Commissioner Borum at his request a couple of months ago. And I did do some research, not to throw you under the bus, Commissioner, but.
I'm speaking on it.
Yes, I, I did do some research and compared nationwide. It varies considerably anywhere from two to twenty. So I just picked.
I was just curious. It wasn't any.
I have a question and I think kind of along the lines of Commissioner Jones and Madam Mayor. With regards to, are there anything that, with regards to, say, for instance, there's these repeat offenders who you are able to identify the chickens that are in the middle of the road? Are there any, are there any things to outline that or address that? And if we start having these chicken farms, for lack of better words, that just pops up in the backyards, is there a mechanism to address that as well?
All right, so again, this provides guidelines. If those guidelines, if you do move forward with this ordinance, it would be codified in our code. So if you violate the code provisions, that would subject you to code enforcement and you would get a violation. In terms of the, the remedy that the special magistrate or a code enforcement would deem to impose, it, it could, oftentimes our code enforcement works very diligently with the homeowners to craft a remedy that isn't onerous. But if it does get to the point of going to a special magistrate hearing, there could be potential fines.
If this is something, Mayor, that is going to pass by the commission, I would like some form of public education to be placed via the website so that a lot of times these ordinance are implemented and they're not really getting into the hands of individuals within our city, city limits. So I would love for us to put together some kind of know, even if it's on our website.
It will be a fowl campaign. And that would be great because when the county changed the ordinance and allowed chicken poultry keeping within the residential zones, everybody in the city said, we can have chickens. And I was like, no. And we don't, it's not allowed within the city limits because it wasn't. But there was a lot of confusion. So I, I agree with your point that information, education is knowledge.
So we set a limit, a maximum limit that they could.
It says ten. Ten chickens.
That's what that said. But can we, we could set our own within the city of Polacka. That's what, yeah.
So this draft ordinance uses ten based upon the research that I did. If you don't like that, this is the first reading. This is the time to.
Yeah, I think we should cut that in half.
Chickens in your backyard.
Okay, Commissioner Borum.
And that, that ordinance came out of the, the town hall had, I mean, the golf course. We had a resident or so come in and made a statement about the roosters and everything else with the loud noise. Waking, waking them up in the morning and different things of that nature. So that being said, we have seen where instances where the, the, the roosters and everything else is all over the city. As well as we have dogs, we've been getting a lot of calls in on. And so code enforcement has been working overtime, trying to help bring the quality of life back into play as it relates to these quality of life issues. So that chicken thing was born out of the town hall. But we've had other things that they've had to revisit numerous times. So we want to just help bring the quality of life back to the people they so deserve.
Thank you. Anybody else have any further statements? And this is including the peacocks that live in the north of the Strong District.
This, the guidelines pertain to all domestic fowl. So that would include.
That would include those peacocks that are wandering around in the long time.
And, and remember, we do not have animal control. We don't have that. So we're not equipped.
Not yet.
So let the people know we don't have anywhere to keep them if we take them. For example, owners out of town, chickens get out. And now then what we do. So that, that, those are things that we need to.
It's a code violation. We're not going to get the business.
But what would you do with the chickens? In the meantime, why, why they out of town?
I think it's an individual situation.
The homeowner is noticed with the violation. We don't do anything with the chickens.
They just run off.
We notice the violation and call them before I hear.
I think we should think about it.
I, I think we could think about a lot of things endlessly. I think we have to. It's, it's an experiment of sorts. And if, if it rolls out and it's really bad, then we'll deal with it. I think sometimes we have to brave new world with chickens and we need to just kind of move forward. Commissioner Borum and Commissioner McCaskill, let her, Commissioner McCaskill, wait patiently. Commissioner McCaskill? You have a comment?
I'll let you go.
I, I, five is good, that was what was in my head. But I'm gonna tell you, five is going to be eight. If we said three, it's going to be five. So let's just consider that, you know, three may, you said two all the way up to ten at some point or twenty. But I'm thinking three, because it'll be five or more. It's, y'all just helped me. Just saying.
So what, what's the magic? They can't reproduce between each other as long as there are no roosters involved. And so I was thinking four or five seemed fair because city lots are small. They're not, most of them are, you know, are not huge. So ten did seem a little much. How did that work? Go ahead, Commissioner Borum. Let Commissioner Borum go.
Let's do four, four, five. I, I'd be happy with whatever they, whatever come up with. I'm, I'm, I'm fine. We just need to put some controls in place.
Right.
So we said four?
Four.
Four. Okay, so let's start with four. We can always go up. Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing. Yes, we got caught up in this chicken talk. Is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Thank you for reminding me. I'm doing a motion to approve. Second, okay, motion is second, all in favor. Aye. Any opposition? Go ahead, say it. No words for you.
Clarity for the record, it's, his motion is with four chickens. Thank you.
Yes, four chickens, four votes. On to ordinance twenty-three forty-eight.
Presenting to you for first reading, although you'll be, you'll recognize this property has come for you in the past. Ordinance number twenty-three forty-eight, an ordinance of the city of Polacka, Florida, amending the provisions of a planned unit development known as Crystal Cove RV Resort Phase One, located at one-twenty-one Crystal Cove Road to remove the requirement for swimming, pool, spa or alike facilities. Allow up to thirty percent of the built sites to be used with the park model recreational vehicles and revise the maximum length of occupancy to no more than one hundred and eighty days in any twelve consecutive month period, providing for an effective date and providing prescribing errors.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, the item before you is an application submitted by Crystal Cove RV Resort and is a request to amend provisions of an existing approved PUD, known as Crystal Cove RV Resort. The, the application was last considered by the city commission past December twenty twenty-three. The prop, just to give you a little bit of background, history on this parcel, the property was originally on R three Presidential High when it was annexed into the city in two thousand and eight. Was then subdivided to include twenty single family lots subdivision. Then in two thousand and seventeen, the city approved a rezoning to a PUD recreation and open space, which is the one that is in effect today. And that was done through ordinance number seventeen twenty-four. That ordinance goals for a maximum of forty RV spaces and thirty-one boat trailer parking spaces as well as other provision and standard that had there to in the approval. Subsequently to that, under new ownership, an application was filed to amend some provision of the existing PUD. The requested amendment included to allow park models up to thirty percent of the built site, second, to delete the requirement for a swimming pool, and third, to extend the length of stay up to one hundred and eighty days. The request was considered by the city commission, as, as I said, in December twenty twenty-three. However, due to concerns raised by the neighbors, adjacent subdivision, residential subdivision, the applicant requested the item to be continued. So they will give it the chance to meet with the community and address those concerns. Since then, the applicant had had a community meeting this past May, May twenty-ninth. And as a result of that meeting, the applicant today is requesting that the park model requested and then previously be deleted and leaving the two other requests in place. This application was reviewed by the planning board, which recommended approval back in December twenty-three. Staff recommends approval with one condition, as stated in the staff report, which is part of the record. All of the, let me just point it out that if this is approved, all the standards and provisions that were stipulated in ordinance number seventeen twenty-four will remain in effect. The applicant is here to address the city commission and to answer any question you might have.
Thank you. Could the applicant please come forward and give your name and address for the record?
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Tara Howell. I'm with JB Pro out of Gainesville, thirty-five thirty Northwest Forty-third Street. The city planner did a wonderful job. So I apologize, a lot of this will be a repeat. If you could go to slide three, just to kind of give you a visual to go along with it. So this is the property in question. As you see, it borders right off of the water's edge. Next slide, please. So the location is one-twenty-one Crystal Cove Drive. It is adjacent to the Crystal Cove RV Resort. As he stated, it was, the ordinance was seventeen twenty-four, which was passed in two thousand and seventeen. Did go in front of the planning board, December fifth of two thousand and twenty-three with recommended approval. Came before you all, December fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, where the hearing was continued. Again, one of the main reasons was some concerns from the residents in the neighborhood. So we have went to good lengths to try to meet with them. We did hold a community meeting. Next slide, please. So on the community meeting, which was held on May twenty-ninth of two thousand and four, we had seven individuals that showed up to the meeting. We had a presentation, we discussed, we listened to a lot of their concerns. Some of the key points that they had were concerns about the impact on the current sewer system, security and maintenance of the resort itself, access points and traffic control, and their neighborhood privacy. One of the things that we heard from them, they seemed to be concerned about the addition of the park models. So if my clients conferred and decided that that was not the largest part of their business plan. And so those have been removed. They are no longer requesting that park models be allowed in the park. So some of the key points, as you see, as you're being handed out, we created a flyer. This was mailed out to sixty-six individuals, all residents within the residential neighborhood. Again, we have a flyer that addressed their concerns. Number one, the sewer concurrency was approved during the original PUD approval back in two thousand and seventeen. There was a concurrency impact analysis that would have been done that clarified that the sewer. that clarified that the sewer system was able to hold the capacity of the new development, that would have had to have been a conditional approval. While I wasn't part of that, I'm sure that that was in play. We also assured them and notified them, there will be a live-on-site 24-hour maintenance security for the facility. So they they, there will not be a time that someone is not at hand, whether there are issues of security or maintenance that need to be handled. You also have in front of you the rules and regulation book. When you have a chance to review those, what you'll find is their business plan has some pretty stringent rules and regulations to keep the resort to a certain level. The RVs have to be a certain quality. The RV sites have to be kept in a very clean, very orderly fashion. The behavior inside the park has to be kept to a very family-friendly behavior. And as far as the number four, the neighborhood privacy, they also added a specific rule, I believe it is rule 15 on the list. Yeah, so Crystal Cove Marina and RV Resort kindly request your understanding and consideration for the neighboring communities. Please respect their privacy and refrain from using these residential areas as walking, biking, or golf cart paths. So this set of rules and regulations would be posted on their website, and it would be given to each registered guest as they come into the park. And then I kind of skipped over number three with the access points and traffic control. What they have decided to do and put in place is that each one of the ingress and egress areas will have electronic gate arms. Those gate arms can only be accessed by either a code or a card. So you would not be able to have just traffic coming in and out, it's going to be registered guests only. The ingress and egress will be directed. So the ingress and egress that will exit out onto the Crystal Cove road is going to be for exit only. So it's not going to be traffic coming in to come down, they will have one-way signs posted showing that it is for egress only. They're also going to, this is not on there, but they're also going to invest in new and additional entrance signs so that the entrance way is clearly marked and easy for guests to find, they'll also have a traffic link on their website. And of course, now we have GPS, everybody has GPS, so, but they will make sure that GPS is updated so that the directions are clear. Next slide, please. So again, just to remind you, these were the original requests, the park models, 30% of total build-out, that has been removed. We heard the residents, they were concerned, so that has been taken off the table. The removal of an approved standard pool, spa, or similar support structure, that does still stand. The main larger unit is going to have all of those features, which will still have the same registered guests getting access to it, so there's just, it didn't, it wasn't a good business plan for them to have to invest in two right next to each other. The extended length of stay, so they are requesting that the stay be up to 180 days. And if you will allow me very quickly to elaborate on that, the reason is because, as many of you know, snowbirds into the state of Florida, those coming from colder climates in the winter, produce a large amount of revenue for the state of Florida and for any city, county, municipality that welcomes them. Most of the snowbird traffic that come into Florida come in between November and April. It is customary that they typically stay for a period of three to six months. By limiting them to only 15 days, that is, that is absolutely causing them to lose 97% or more of the snowbird activity that could be directed into Palatka, into their resort, which would then, of course, spill over revenue into the city of Palatka. So that is the reason for the 180-day increase, is simply to be able to open their park up for that demographic specifically. And then the last page is just, this is the conceptual site plan, which you also have a copy of, and that's it, any questions?
I do have one, just a just a minor question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I don't do RV parks or anything, just explain the shower area for me. Just a concern, like it says, all minors under the age of 18 must be occupied. And is it like, tell me the makeup of that.
Yes, ma'am, if it would be all right, I'm gonna call up Dave, he is the developer who can answer those specific questions for you.
I'm David McDaniel, I'm with M3 Development. I live in Maitland at 220 Adams Drive. Thank you very much for hearing us today. To answer your question, in most RV resorts, there is always a common shower facility. That is, actually, the people who I know who who RV a lot, the wives use the RV shower and they send the men to go do the showering in the other facility. And I'm saying that with a little jest, the truth is, is that, is that it's just an additional way in which people can can get their, get cleaned up and showered after a day of travel. So it's 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 available to the to the customers of the RV resort. Did that answer your question? Did I get to it?
Yeah, just a just a little concern about safety and I don't want to, you know, maybe some predators hanging around at the shower, making sure there's heavily monitored, the lighting, everything, just the location of it.
It's right, it's right in the center, this particular bathhouse is right in the center of the development. Tara mentioned the fact that we will have people living there who are kind of park.
Neighborhood watch.
Neighborhood monitors, people and and it's this particular phase of the development is is 40 units, it's pretty on the small side. I think we're going to be able to keep an eye on on what's going on. So I also like to add one other item with regard to the length of stay is one of the top RV resorts in Florida is one that was recently acquired by Jimmy Buffett's Margaritaville, and they have a 180-day stay as their their maximum stay. So we're consistent with the other high-quality RV resorts in the state. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Yes.
I noticed at first you guys had a plan to have a swimming pool and ground swimming pool, stuff like that, you guys strike that out of the plan?
Yeah, so that was actually included in the original back in 2017, which was a different owner that's since been purchased. And there is an additional site that's going to be connected to this one, which is a much larger site, and that one will have the amenities. So again, as a business plan, trying to do things as cost-effectively as possible, not having two side-by-side right next to each other was the reason for that.
Gotcha, and know we're gonna be bringing snowbirds in. How would you think they'll feel about the chicken ordinance?
They'd have to cross the road.
Honestly, I I I I'm from Gilchrist County, so you're asking the wrong person about, we got, we got chickens everywhere.
Exactly, I mean, you know, I've seen some of those RVs, they're
Yes.
They're high dollar.
They are, yes, sir.
And then the Crystal Cove area, those houses are
Yes, they are.
And also, that's why, and I could explain my position on that. You know, you get one person that want to have a chicken farm in they go to the neighborhood, so, that's my thought. I said it.
Thank you for sharing. Is there anybody else here for public comment, thank you. About this type of people? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. We have a motion to approve. Someone. Your motion is second, all in favor? Thank you. The next ordinance, 202348.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next two ordinances are related, being the same project. Ordinance number 202407 is presented to you for adoption as future land use maps have one reading, and then ordinance 202408 is presented for first reading. Ordinance number 202407, an ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, which is less than 50 acres in size, from the city of Palatka Commercial to the city of Palatka Residential Low, RL, for the following property located on Kelly Smith School, Red Black Ford 32177. Partial numbers 910-2602-13000, 0010, 0910-2602-13000, oh, oh. 20 and 910-2602-130030. Continue us to the boundaries of the city of Palatka, and providing for scrubber no shares, and providing for effective date.
Madam Mayor Commissioners, this is a request for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, and a rezoning like Sunny just stated. It's for a three-lot residential subdivision with totals about half an acre, more or less, and it's located on the north side of Kelly Smith School Road. The request specifically is to change the existing future land use from commercial to residential, low, RL, and to change the existing zoning from general commercial C1 to residential single-family R1. The planning board has reviewed and approved the request on March 24th of this year. The City Commission have previously approved this, if you remember, the plat was approved by by this commission back in April of this year. The application meets all the requirements for a land use amendment and a rezoning has been stated in the staff report, and therefore staff recommends approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning as it is specified in the corresponding ordinances.
Ready questions? Yes, please come up, give your name, please come up, give your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much, ma'am. First I'd like to say this, I don't mind, this is not part of I was born and raised and put in Palatka. My name's Robert A. Wise, and I was born and raised like some of y'all have been. I want to appreciate ma'am. 150 Kelly Smith School Road. But I want to, I appreciate Ms. Lawson, Mary Lawson Brown, for her effort to keep the history of Palatka forefront. Because this town has a great history. And I appreciate what she's doing. And that's not part of what I got to speak about, okay? Now, I live on 150 Kelly Smith School Road. Can you, can you show me the map up there, please? I appreciate it. Okay. I'm looking at it right, it says C, R1 and C1. Is that right? Right there. Now, this map that's showing on this diagram I have, that place off to the left, that little outlet right there, that wasn't only the original, when they went before, when this people went before the Palatka zoning board, that little piece of property wasn't only the original plat. And I like know where, you know, I know where it is. It comes right behind my property. And if I remember correctly, the three pieces of property on Krill Avenue, there's that one and two more before we get to Gale Lane, is owned by Mr. Finley later. It was, but I don't remember this piece of property being on the original submission. But this property is on like it is. Now, my question is this. It started out, this property was going to be divided up into residential properties. And the course of action through the zoning board and all this, they got, it was advertised as being on Kelly Smith School Road, the whole piece of property. And I asked a question at the zoning board, why couldn't they make it the entrance off of Highway 20? And I was told that because they would have to get the state of Florida to approve a turning lane and all this stuff. Then how come all of a sudden it can be listed on Krill Avenue? Has somebody unchanged the rules of the game? You know, they got permission to get a turning lane put in from the state of Florida off of Highway 20? Because they built these, they built this one little house, Kelly Smith School Road. That's on that bottom part down there where it said R1. There's one house there.
I know what you're talking about.
And and I will be, I know, I'm probably limited to time, I appreciate you, your patience. Okay? But that house was built on that property before it's even, this parcel of land was ever even got passed the zoning board. You know? Because I live right down the road, and I watch what they do. And now they have the one to change it, from commercial to residential. But the C1 up there has already got signs out advertising for sale, and it's listed as commercial property. So I don't, I don't know what's going on. Somebody, somebody needs to explain it to me, if they want to wait a while, I'll listen to them. But you know, something ain't right, is my opinion.
I understand that is that this parcel was a bigger parcel, which aligns with on Krill. It was, I think it was sold just half an acre, and that's what it was subdivided in the plat that you approved back in April. So the current owner of this plat, of these three lots, they have no control over the rest of the property. And what they ask is the rezoning of those three lots, not the whole parcel. Because they have no control over it. The owner of these three lots. Now, if I may?
Can you show us Lorenzo? Can you show us what you, what you, what he's talking about and what you're talking about?
Yeah, can you, can you go to the next one? The proposed future land use map. There.
Make it, yeah.
No, the future land use map, that's the existing zoning, it's figure two. There. May I point out to you?
Yes, sir.
We're talking about these three lots, right? Which is part of this C1, which is the whole parcel that they have no control. They're only on these two parcels, and that's what is being changed.
So, sir, Mr. Lorenzo, to his point, I'm questioning, see that I understand what you're saying. That commercial lot that starts on Krill, goes all the way through to Kelly Smith Road, is that what you're telling me, right? So that's one piece, that's one piece of property that's zone commercial.
That's correct.
So far?
Yes.
And now you're asking for it to be rezoned, half of it?
No, no, not half of it, it's only half an acre for those three lots.
Right.
Those three lot were created back in April, when the City Commission approved the plat.
Okay, so, so I know the house he's talking about, just recently built, and it was built on the commercial lot?
No, it's vacant.
Pardon me?
It's vacant.
I, I, I can't understand. I said it was built on a
There's nothing built on those lots.
It is. It is a house on that lot, a brand spanking new house. It is, I saw it just the other day. And look where it says, C1, C1 goes all the way through.
For clarification, the the house that's just been built is on a different residential lot.
For clarification, the, the house that's just been built is on a different residential lot. It is not on
So, how many lots on that corner? Before you get to the, the new, newly built, new construction?
I don't know, I mean, the, the, the new build that we're referring to is not part of this application, so.
I'm talking, I mean, you looking at that map, could you tell me, I mean?
I, I cannot tell you where it is. I went to the site to do the inspection and it's all vacant. These three lots are vacant. That's right.
I think some pictures, some actual pictures would help.
Bring that to us.
If, if the clerk could potentially go to the Putnam County Property Appraisers website.
Thank you.
Sunny, and if you'll do a property search for nine one one, address seven three four one Krill. Thank you, and yeah. Scroll down a little bit, scroll down, there, there you go. Does that help Commissioner McCaskill, it gives you a better view? You have already approved of the plat and I'll defer back to Mr. Agimo to take it from here, but this might provide a better map. Slating of the individual lots was approved already by this commission, so now we're, we're seeking to rezone.
That's correct, because the intent is to develop three single family homes.
Okay.
But yeah, there's, there was, it should, yeah, what happened, let me, let me explain this, and it was before my time. I don't know why it was not considered at the same time. Usually when you do a plat, you also do the future land use amendment and the rezoning all at the same hearing. That didn't happen for whatever reason, I don't know. But it went, right. He went to the planning board in March for the rezoning, but we didn't have the plat yet. And the plat came back to you in April. And that's when you approved the final plat. And now we coming back to get the rezoning and the future land is changed.
Well, to his point, that's what he was saying, that the house was built prior to it being rezoned. Rather, that's the house, well, he just said it, well, you confusing me too.
I, I, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't know which house is referring to, where that house is, is, is built.
So you say on those four, three, it looks like it's four vacant, like, nothing is built on, on that lot.
No, there are three vacant lots. I went to post a sign on the, on the property and it's still vacant.
Is that three?
And it might even have some pictures of it.
It's three lots, four lots?
Three lots.
Looked like four to me.
But we're talking only about those lots, we're not talking about the others.
I, I do understand that, but I was on the assumption, I thought you said it too, that that lot goes all the way over to Kelly Smith Road.
Right. But the current owner is only, they only own those three lots, you know, that have an acre. They're, right.
And that was zoned prior commercial?
Yeah, the whole parcel was zoned commercial.
Any additional questions?
I don't know if I feel comfortable going, moving forward where we don't have all of the commission, you know, understanding the process. I know it may be, if, if, if you can help bring it home or something so that all of us can be understand what's going on.
Sure, it, it is already plotted, you did approve of that to break it from the parcel that, of lots, Krill right now to have these individual lots along Kelly Smith Road. That plat has already been approved, that's why you see it parceled up like this on the Putnam County Property Appraisers site. So now they are seeking the, the rezoning and the future land use map, so they are able to proceed with the, the residential development for those lots. We could potentially, Mr. Agimo, provide some photographs if you wanted to table it, so you have a better idea, but that is not standard. But if there are questions like that, that additional information could be provided.
We, we have a resident there that's uneasy about it, and he asked him questions, and I think we, we, we he took the time out to be, to this entire meeting, it's important to him, so it's important to me. And when we bring this stuff, I want to understand what I'm voting on, and I think we all should, and to make it easier, bring the pictures, so that we can see the real, what we have, I assure you have a file folder with it, and I don't, you know, because he's uneasy, I can see it on his face, I want him to go away from here, knowing that we heard, we were listening, and we want to address what he had to say.
Sure, what I would recommend is that we take photographs and bring those photographs back to you. So that the commission can feel comfortable moving forward. I understand what it is that the concern is, and I believe in those, if you're looking at that drawing there, in those numbered ones to the, in the white, there are homes there, but the ones to the left in the pink, there are not. And that's kind of confusing, because the, the parcels that we're talking about are the, in the pink and not in the white. So in order to clarify that, we can go ahead and take photographs and bring that back and provide that so that you can move forward.
And there was some questions about three versus four, just to clarify.
This, these three, not this, not this one. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to table.
Second.
The motion is second to table, all in favor?
But, but I may just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify, your, your motion is to continue this item to the next
Next meeting.
City commission, so we don't have to re-advertize again.
And that is July eleventh at six o'clock.
And, and if I may, we just have to remember that we do have a commissioner for who is colorblind, so that does get in the way. Are you okay, because you did bring that up, you know, so just, just making sure, so, I'm sorry.
So, again, next meeting and photos that
Thank you to help.
We'll do that.
It hit a man.
Thank you.
Can you, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think Commissioner Campbell actually could.
Okay, go ahead.
The first question I got is the address of this property on this piece of paper right here is Krill Avenue. Those lots on that map is on Kelly Smith School Road. So something's not right, it's not right in the description. You know? And can I make a suggestion? That somebody go back to the original request to the planning board, look at the map that was drawn up for that request to rezone it. You won't see this little jut out on the left that they got on this map, on this map. So y'all, excuse me, I'm nervous. Yeah, nervous. But anyway, that's all I got to say. All right, I appreciate your time, I appreciate your time.
With regards to this, and as we begin to move forward, may we make it a customary practice to bring actual photos? If it is something that we can do, I think it possibly would eliminate, it would eliminate and accommodate the various forms of the various forms for commissioners, so if we are able to provide actual shots, I would prefer that we move forward and let that be a part of our practice.
And that it give, you know, the community, people who come out to attend the meetings, more clear picture as well, so I think that, thank you, sir, for bringing it forward.
I, I, I know we're at Commissioner's comments, I just had an announcement that I wanted to share when you're ready for that.
Yes, I just want to announce, as we approach Juneteenth, there are several community events that are going on. The first event that is taking place this upcoming Saturday, which is June the fifteenth, is hosted by Ms. Lafar Davis, who is no stranger to Palacca and no stranger to providing quality events here in our city. She is hosting her, her fourth annual Juneteenth Community Cultural Event. And it is set to take place at the Calvary Life Center, which is fourteen fourteen Bronson Street here in the city of Palacca. The time is twelve to four P M. She has a awesome lineup of acts, vendors that will be participating, the African American Cultural Arts, along with Douglas Law Firm. On the nineteenth, which is actual Juneteenth, will host the inaugural Jubilee on the St. John's River. It's an evening event that will be hosted from four to eight P M. We are looking to have a awesome time there. There's also a lineup of entertainers, vendors that will be there. And then again, on the twenty second, as you see, we approve the day, tonight, that the city of Palacca will be hosting a Juneteenth event as well. Again, that was approved on tonight's agenda, so we want to make sure that we support those events or any other events that we have within our community.
What would the city of Palacca event be held?
City of Palacca event would be held at Jenkins Middle, well, well, the north side neighborhood facility. And I believe
And that, that June twenty second one is that movie?
That's the movie night. No, this is put on by Cultural Affairs, I'm just in support of it.
What I would like to do is see if I can tag on with, I need to talk to them, tagging on to add something to that. But I need to talk with them about my funds, and I'll see if it's okay.
That's fine, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I had sent a update for you, I got pinged by something that we already currently have in, in the pipeline in terms of the update with the due diligence and the valuation of the property. So, where are we with that, because we are coming up to the due diligence timeframe? So, I, I've got pinged on it, so I would like to know where we are, because we haven't heard anything, it's been kind of dead silent.
Sure. So, the due diligence deadline that we have is August fifteenth, if I'm correct. We have requested, and I believe Ms. Krantz sent out a request for a workshop for the commission to be able to come together and meet to look at the due diligence question concerning the proposed swap. The staff internally has been collecting documents and data and information inclusive of the appraisals for the properties. We are almost finished collecting that information, and we can convey that. We can convey that independent of the workshop as soon as we have that information. But I think the workshop is going to be the key focal point.
Just wanted to keep the commission apprised, because it's been kind of dead silent and we just going along, so just thank you for the update.
And to piggyback off that, during that time, we'll be discussing, because we did have a, a citizen to come forth with a question, what do we want to do? Do we have a plan if we decide to swap with that building?
Correct.
So, we need to be able to have that answer and have those discussions during that time.
Absolutely.
Thank you, is anybody else? Said, do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry, Mr. Campbell.
That's okay. In addition to that one announcement about the due diligence, which we just touched on, I wanted to make sure the commission was aware that the attorney Mark Lawson, who was tasked to develop the, the number for the fire assessment, has indicated July eleventh for the public hearing to solidify the number that he has identified for the fire assessment. So, just a heads up, July eleventh, fire assessment, public hearing for that amount.
You, you mean fire assessment for our upcoming
Yes, and I will be out of town on Monday for, as part of the Father's Day weekend, so I will be sending out a message to, to the commission for contact information in case of emergency.
Thank you, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.